All right. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available at the table near the entrance or online at the city website. Consent agendas are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who do wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. The first thing that we are going to do is I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss labor negotiations, 1 MRS 4056D.
Thank you, Ben.
Patty, can I get a Klepack's take of the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepack?
Peter Gads.
Councillor Green is absent. Councillor Gagnon? Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is five in favor and one opposed.
Okay. All right, folks, we'll see you in just a few minutes. Disclosure of conflict of interest. Does any councillor have any conflicts of interest for any of the votes that they're going to take tonight? Say, "None." We will move on tonight. We have a presentation. "Hopeful Artwork," signed Kate O'Halloran and Charlie Hewitt. Are they here tonight? In the essence of time, should we move to the manager's report and then give them a moment? Yeah, let's go with the city manager's report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're happy to announce the successful CDBG funding for the Dupre property at 165 Main Street, the $500,000 award. There's an article in the Morning Sentinel this past week also. Will be essential in seeing the building receive much needed roof and wall replacement and is a major piece of the funding needed by the owners to begin construction. So that was a great award there, $500,000. Quick staffing update. Happy to announce the arrival of our newest customer service representative, Emily Seer, to our team. We wish Emily well for many years here with the city of Waterville and are sure she's going to have great success here. So welcome, Emily. A couple of community project notes. We're actively working on a drainage issue impacting a few residents between Western Avenue and Francis Street. The sewer district and our city engineer have developed a plan that will resolve the issues pending some easement work, and we expect a full resolution by the fall. We're also working on setting up a meeting with all impacted property owners and tenants in the area of Lublow Court. I know Ray has been here several times, familiar with him, to discuss the traffic and parking issues on Lublow, so we hope to have some resolution there in the near future as well. We've also requested with DEP a follow-up review to discuss drainage and runoff impacts on the Web Road and some residential properties there from the airport sewer project. The sewer company has done tree replanting that was required, a little bit late, but it has been done. We would like to further discuss the ideas for further drainage issues and mitigation with DEP, and we're waiting word back from them. My next city manager's open office hours will be at the Muskie Center on the South End this week, June 20th, from 11:00 to 12:30 is our next event. All Waterville residents, local business owners, and of course, we're all welcome and encouraged to attend to share their thoughts, views, ideas, complaints, or anything else you'd like to share with me. So look forward to that. Had a great turnout there last time, so again, that's on June 20th, 11:00 to 12:30. Aging in place. I'll be participating in a meeting coming up with Patricia O, program manager at the University of Maine Center on Aging, to discuss age-friendly communities in Maine. We have several citizens interested in forming a steering committee in Waterville who I'll be joining for this meeting. This is a really important topic, and there's a lot we can do to make Waterville a more age-friendly community. Looking forward to that meeting coming up and any good dialogue or ideas that come out of that. Quick update on our Comprehensive Plan Commission. The Com Plan Commission has received the results of our community survey and is now working to schedule a series of public sessions going into the fall to solicit feedback that could be considered for inclusion into the new draft com plan. As I said, these meetings are tentatively scheduled to begin probably in September.
I know.
Just a quick note, as you all know and as many know, the city will not be renewing our contract with the Central Main Growth Council for the economic development position. We are, however, obviously maintaining our membership in the Growth Council. I just want to take a quick opportunity to thank the Growth Council, particularly Gabe, for all of his work in many, many projects happening in Waterville, and we look forward to continuing to work with the Growth Council, be strong supporters there. So just a thank you and an update there on that contract. Reminder to please enroll in our city mass notification system. Waterville-me.myfreealerts is the place to go. And piggybacking on that, I'd like to also just announce again this one out today. The city will be operating and opening a cooling center right here in this building Wednesday, the 19th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and also Thursday, the 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This flyer has gone out. I'd like to particularly thank our public safety people, chiefs Essler and Bonney, fire and police, as well as all of our volunteers who have committed to staffing the center already. So a great community service. Thank you for the quick action of these departments. And again, thanks to our staff, our chiefs, and our volunteers. And again, that's Wednesday and Thursday, 11:00 to 5:00, right here at this building. And if you do know of anyone in need, please don't hesitate to reach out to city staff person or police and fire, and we'll help get them here as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any update on...
Hey, Jack, can you clean up the audio just a little bit?
Go further and let me know what to do while I clean up the audio. Is it not loud enough?
We need a little more.
Not loud enough? Councillor Klepack, is it not loud enough?
Councillor Klepack, you're muted. Could you try to tell us what the audio issue is, please?
Yeah, it's just very, it's just very garbled. It was difficult to hear, Brian. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, it just sounds like you guys are talking from inside a pillow-lined cage or... I don't know if Bill's having a same problem, but it's okay. All right, let's just keep going.
Are we ready to move on? I don't see... I presented. They're not here.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
That could be...
That's going to be my first suggestion, because it sounds fine in here.
Sounds fine in here. We could shut down the Zoom and restart.
I'm going to leave and rejoin. I'll see you guys in a minute.
Councillor Klepack has left.
Yeah. Where'd you talk?
Absolutely. He stayed his fresh hose.
That's a little better.
There you go. Got it?
Is that better, Councillor Klepack?
Much better, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Tom, give us just a few minutes. We're just setting up this presentation real quick.
Don't worry, thank you.
Thank you. I love this. I love handouts.
Yes?
Yes. Charlie, don't worry. Nice to meet you.
Did we get his handout email to us or something? We did, or we can't?
And where do you want me to stand?
Okay.
Hello, how are you? I'm well. Are we ready to go?
I think so, yeah. I think this is fantastic, so I'll let you take it away and we'll go from there.
Okay. Can you all... Okay, I'll stand here. Hate to have my back to you, but you get the gist. Hi, everybody. My name is Kate O'Halloran. I am a very proud... I grew up in Waterville, and my dad sold insurance here on Main Street for 50 years. Hi, everybody in the back. And I am here tonight to present to you what we think is a really wonderful opportunity for Waterville, and it's to put a hopeful sign here in Waterville. I'm going to just kind of queue up the project, and then I'm going to turn it over to Charlie Hewitt, who's here with me. But just a little bit about me. I grew up in Waterville, went away to school, lived in Boston for 15 years, and now have been back in Maine for 20 years. And in my time in back here in Maine, I have somehow become a fundraiser. It was not something I dreamt of doing as a child, but here we are. And in my time back in Maine, I've worked for Colby, Maine General, and I was assisting the city with a Riverwalk project. I worked for Maine General when we redid the fair. I was a board member of Waterville Main Street, did some consulting with Shannon with Waterville Creates. So kind of the one thing in life that I actually sort of know how to do is raise money. This project started when I was asked by the town of Yarmouth to come last spring for their Day of Hope. And in my other life, my real life, I actually worked for Lifelight. So I was actually there presenting for Lifelight. And the other presenter was Charlie. And I will tell you, he got up and he gave his presentation about his work, and I was like, oof, that is not someone we want to follow. He just is a wonderful, wonderful guy. And I was so moved by Charlie, I said, "This is a guy that I need to get to know." And I was so moved and impressed with what he was doing with a hopeful project, instantly that night, I said, "We need to bring a hopeful sign to Waterville." Because of all the wonderful things that Waterville has been, is, and will be, this is a visible beacon that's, I think, really important. So that kicked off a process where Charlie and I just started talking. I instantly thought of Shannon and Kim Lindloff and all the folks I know in Waterville, and I was like, "I think we can really do this." So I'm going to let Charlie talk a little bit about who he is, and I just want to be clear that tonight, we're not asking for anything. It's just information about the project and what's happening. And after he talks, I'll talk a little bit about the plan to get this done, because we do think we have a good plan. We've spent a lot of time. So really, I'm going to turn it over to Charlie, and then I'll do a really quick close. Questions, comments? Okay, Charlie.
Thank you, everyone. Mayor and councillors, thanks for the opportunity. This is my fourth visit to a city council, talking about the hopeful project, and it's an honor and a pleasure to be here to present to you this narrative that I have about what's happened with this hopeful sign. And it's what happened in Maine, in seven states, and just on the 27th of this month it will be written in Ukraine. And so it has a huge presence. I'm from... I was born in Lewiston, lived in New Auburn. My childhood was there. My family were French Canadians, St. Louis. My dad was an interloper sailor, because that's how I got the name Hewitt, but I identify French, French Canadian. I care a lot about the community and the culture. It gave me a lot to think about, and now that I'm old enough to know the difference, it had a lot to do with who I am today. I'm an artist, but I'm also a dad, a participant in my community. I love my state, I love my country, and I found it very unique that I happen to be now an artist who has something as significant as a message as hopeful, like in cocktail cities and towns, about seeing if they're interested in having that representation in their communities. But more so, and more importantly than all, talking to this, I love the river towns of Maine. I was born, I lived on a river. I lived on the Andrew Skoggan. For whatever it was, it was my river. I've put a piece up in Romford, Augusta, Bangor, and Waterville. These river towns are the heart and structure of this state. The people who come from here, the hard-working people. So I love coming and talking about the work ethic and the river communities of Maine. And also want to say a couple of other things in reverence to Lewiston. The hopefuls are made in Lewiston, at Neo Craft's sign. And for me, everything now is about Lewiston, all about Lewiston for me in my heart. So I love going... I was in St. Mary's County, Maryland, where we put one up talking about Lewiston, Maine, talking about the people of Lewiston, Maine, how they get up in the morning after tragedy, how they celebrate life in their own way. I am now bonded with the hopeful, the Neo Craft's sign, the people of Maine, and how we can be a community together. And the uniqueness of that is how I meet Kate. What a state we live in, that's small enough that I can go speak at a high school event and run into somebody like her, who brings me here. And that's something really special that goes on with this community we have. And what's happening with this hopeful sign is also becoming a signifier of our community, of our ability to see each other. I mean, we're not a rich state, but we're resourceful. We're not a big population-wise, but we see each other, and we know we need to work with each other. There's something unique in that, and I think there's something special about what's happened with the hopeful project that's gone all through the coast, that has a uniqueness to being from Maine, and the fact that we could talk and know and see each other. The sign has no political message whatsoever, none. It's actually a very curious thing that even happened. I'm kind of a hostage to it now. It's not easy being a hopeful guy. I've got a relationshipless responsibility to it, and I'm pleased to be able to talk about it. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Kate, for the introduction, and any questions you have, I'd be glad to talk to you about.
So just to sum, the hope is the hope, is that we will get this hopeful sign. It will go at the end of Main Street on the Lockwood Building. For anybody who knows me, I like to go big. And so I cut a deal with Charlie that the hopeful sign in Waterville will be the biggest sign in the state, at least for five years. That's the deal. And it will be part of what... The other thing that Charlie is doing is putting a hopeful trail together around Maine to connect and promote all of these cities that have the hopeful signs. And in talking with Shannon and Waterville Creates, there's lots of things we can do around this hopeful message to really make the people of Waterville feel like this is their sign, this is their initiative. So in terms of funding, we're not going to come to the city to ask for funding. We're going to do this with private philanthropy, and ideally, we're going to do it pretty quickly with basically 10 gifts. Two gifts of 25, hopefully four gifts of 10 grand, four gifts of 5 grand. The cool part of this is that I believe that philanthropy should be accessible to as many people as possible. So one of the things that we did here is that people are going to be able to buy a light, because that hopeful sign is going to be made up of a lot of little lights. So for $100, people are going to be able to buy a light. And so the idea is you're walking down Main Street, and you look up with your parent, your sibling, your child, and you say, "That's your light." So that's what we're trying to do. The idea is to try to get this going. We're going to start fundraising pretty soon here, and if all goes well, and try to get this going by February of '25, and bring some light and hope to Waterville at a time when I think we can all agree we probably need it. So I don't know if you have questions, or if that gives you enough of a snapshot. Happy to answer any questions now or anytime.
No, I think this is fantastic. If anybody's not been to your website to see the story, it's phenomenal. I remember the first time that I saw a hopeful sign, I was coming back from Portland, I was going to text you, but it was the first time I saw it. I'd driven by there a hundred times, but it was always during this day, and it wasn't lit up. But this one was at night, and it was lit up, and I said, "Whoa!" And it just stood out. And I told my now-wife, "I just saw this awesome sign." She goes, "Yeah, we got one of those in Bangor." I'm like, "Are you kidding me?" Like, so, yeah, so that's what got me interested into this whole thing, and it's such a cool thing, and I will absolutely buy a bulb for sure. But yeah, I am super excited for this project. Anyone else, some councillor? Anything? Councillor Green?
Yes. I was just wondering if you've started the fundraising yet? Because I noticed your goal is July 1st, so that's in writing.
We have not, because we wanted to have this meeting first. I will tell you that I have emails drafted in my... That when I'm going to go home tonight, and I'm going to push send. But I just wanted to make sure we came, and out of respect for all of you, told you the plan and heard any concerns, because that's the right thing to do. So we haven't. It's aggressive, but we do have a plan to go forward pretty aggressively, but great question, so thank you.
Awesome.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's pretty cool. All right, so moving on to councillor comments and committee reports. Any councillors have any comments or committee reports this evening? Councillor Green?
I'll just update everyone on what the Housing Committee is working on right now. We have been crafting a proposal for a revolving loan fund, and that should be coming to the council first meeting in July, possibly second, so very excited about that. It's a way to use some funds that will perpetuate themselves and revolve, and so that we'll have a fund that will support construction of low-income housing for some time. So that's coming up.
Excellent. Councillor Finch?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that myself, Jess Graham, the mayor, and the city manager met with applicants for the Student Youth Council last week? Was it really only last week? Okay. And we have extended acceptance letters to the lot of them. So we have a good-sized youth council that will be having kind of their inaugural kickoff at the end of August, and then one of them will be joining us, I guess, for regular meetings after that. So that's exciting, and something to look forward to.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, now we will move on to public comment. Anyone in the public wish to make a comment about anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Please do so now. That's okay. Probably nobody there anyway.
Hi, everybody. Samantha Burdick, Ward 3. I just wanted to let you know that there's really great community events happening this weekend. I was chatting with Amy earlier. Amy called her earlier, and she tells me they're estimating like 7,500 people coming to the city for the weekend, so that's exciting. But one of those things is Rotary is holding the district conference here in Waterville, and it's going to be held right at the Opera House, and there are going to be Rotarians here from across the state, as well as Quebec, which is pretty exciting. And part of that is the Sunrise Rotary Club is having their annual mini-golf tournament, Bob Stevenson Mini-Golf Tournament, that we do to raise money for various causes throughout the community. But as part of that also, we're recognizing Rian with the Bob Stevenson Award, which is an award for someone that shows outstanding dedication to their community. And if you guys don't know who Bob Stevenson was, he was one of the co-owners of SBS. And he was really the kind of guy that was behind the scenes, doing things all the time, and never sought recognition for it, which is very similar to Councillor Finch. So I just wanted to let you guys all know that. If you want to put in a little council mini-golf tournament team, let me know, and I will get you all signed up. So that would be kind of a fun little activity, little bonding activity, if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty, anyone online? Anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. Paula Raymond, Ward 7. And I just wanted to send everybody a reminder that the AYCC comes to our community starting on Monday, and it's going to be that four-day program for students K through 5, and it's from 10 to 2. Lunch will be provided. It's going to be kind of a fun thing. It's brand-new for us. It's eight weeks, and so we're pretty excited that we're going to have guests over at our Green Street Park. It'll be kind of exciting, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
On a lighter note, I've been making bread lately. It's kind of fun for me and my kids. And so I make this bread, because I've got all these ingredients, which is kind of like Wagyu. We've got all these things, you know? And you bake this thing, and then you've got this thing. So I make this great loaf of bread, and I got this really old, like, probably Walmart knife, and I'm like, struggling to have good bread. I'm like, really bummed. So I go on Amazon, I order this cool bread knife. I use it tonight, and I was like, "This is magic." Like, straight slices, and they're all the same size, and I'm like, "It's magic." If you have a tool to use on the things that you have, you have great things, but you need a tool. You can make this great loaf of bread, and then you've just got this pile of stuff, and everyone's pulling at it. So I got a new knife. I'm pretty excited about it. I did have a question. I think I may have to ask for a request for exact details, but I wanted people to be thinking about this, because I was very, very curious. It just struck me the other day. I was driving down the road, and you get used to the Kennebec River and all these dams we have, the Veselonski, whatever. Does Waterville get a tax revenue from CMP? Obviously, we must, because they have infrastructure, they have buildings on our property, but they also have a dam on our river, and they're generating electricity and money. Like, I'm getting my bill, it seems like a lot of money, from electricity. And is it divided in our budget as revenue? Revenue from property? And I don't know what you would call that. Revenue from money you make from the water that goes through our town? I was just thinking of different revenue streams to make money, and I was like, I was asking these questions, because I asked like 10 people, and they're like, "From CMP for the water?" I'm like, "It's in our town." Yeah. Like, if you were drilling oil, they would have oil rights, but they would be paying tax on that. Water is no different than oil. It's a resource. We own both sides of the river, so I was just curious about that. And does anyone know if that kind of revenue, not just from CMP, but maybe just CMP, is it divided in our budget as revenue? Different types of revenue from property? Or can we tax the things? Different types of revenue from property or can we tax the things they make, like the energy?
This is public comment, so we don't, this is not discussion. So we'll, but we will, you have been noted.
It's out there on TV.
We will get, we will get those answers absolutely to you.
TV.
So.
Okay.
Send a link to the knife because everybody wants to buy one. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online, Patty? Wonderful. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor DeBrito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to old business, Order 114, 2024.
Approve the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount of $4,999,000 for capital projects.
Move to adopt.
Second. Christine, can I just sit over there just in case there's any questions? You can just jump right on. I appreciate it. All right, any councillor comment at this point?
I don't have a comment. I just think it's helpful to just summarize what the items are so that people know as we will.
Are you asking for just the projects to be read?
Do you want me to do that?
Do you have the list?
I do have the project.
I'm just reading.
I have it. Do you want to do it? Don't know. Put it on there.
Thank you, boys. You've got a lot to do.
We've got it.
We've got it.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
You just want me to leave it?
Administration is the downtown vision project for $100,000. Beautification project, which includes trees and streetscapes for $100,000. The EMS ambulance remount would be $270,500. The information technology piece would be the network update and redesign for $255,500. The library is the exterior building assessment and the HVAC replacement system. The exterior assessment is $30,000. The HVAC replacement is $150,000. Proxim recreation are two wide-area mowers for $80,000. And Public Works, the vast majority, is citywide street and sidewalk paving for $800,000. Citywide street and sidewalk reconstruction for $2,948,000. And one single-axle dump truck, plow truck for $265,000, which comes to a total of $4,999,000.
And I believe that there is a, on the website, the list of streets that we are paving this year. And I know there were some questions about Water Street. People were like, oh, Water Street's pretty good. They just don't bunch it. But this was, Water Street is just for the sidewalk. And that goes from spring to grow. So we're doing the whole, pretty much the whole lot of the sidewalk in, on the Water Street project. So when you see that online, it is for the sidewalk and not the street. Any other comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none. Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor DeBrito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to old business, Order 114, 2024.
Approve the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount of $4,999,000 for capital projects.
Move to adopt.
Second. Christine, can I just sit over there just in case there's any questions? You can just jump right on. I appreciate it. All right, any councillor comment at this point?
I don't have a comment. I just think it's helpful to just summarize what the items are so that people know as we will.
Are you asking for just the projects to be read?
Do you want me to do that?
Do you have the list?
I do have the project.
Okay.
I haven't. Do you want to do it? Don't know. Put it on there.
Thank you, boys. You've got a lot to do.
We've got it.
We've got it.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
You just want me to leave it?
Administration is the downtown vision project for $100,000. Beautification project, which includes trees and streetscapes for $100,000. The EMS ambulance remount would be $270,500. The information technology piece would be the network update and redesign for $255,500. The library is the exterior building assessment and the HVAC replacement system. The exterior assessment is $30,000. The HVAC replacement is $150,000. Proxim recreation are two wide-area mowers for $80,000. And Public Works, the vast majority, is citywide street and sidewalk paving for $800,000. Citywide street and sidewalk reconstruction for $2,948,000. And one single-axle dump truck, plow truck for $265,000, which comes to a total of $4,999,000.
And I believe that there is a, on the website, the list of streets that we are paving this year. And I know there were some questions about Water Street. People were like, oh, Water Street's pretty good. They just don't bunch it. But this was, Water Street is just for the sidewalk. And that goes from spring to grow. So we're doing the whole, pretty much the whole lot of the sidewalk in, on the Water Street project. So when you see that online, it is for the sidewalk and not the street. Any other comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none. Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor DeBrito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, excellent. Moving on to Order 115, 2024.
Appropriation of municipal and school operating budgets for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Move to adopt.
Second. Okay. So this is the second reading of our municipal and school operating budget for the '24-'25 fiscal year. I will open this up to some discussion amongst the council. If there are things that people want to make amendments for or talk about, this would be the time to do that. Anyone on the council wish to kick us off this evening?
Well, I believe we have an amendment that was tabled, so that, we want to put that back on the floor.
Do you want to make the motion again?
Do I, is that what I need to do? Yes, I'll make the motion to reconsider, consider the amendment.
Is that the one in regards to the 80?
It's a reduction in the administration line of $80,000.
I'll second the motion.
And I just want to add that the reason for this is with the change in staffing that we've, that we're looking at with the departure of our current Assistant City Manager and the reorganization of our Economic Development Person, it seems this is a good place for some savings. So I'm recommending that that $80,000 be applied to the department so that there's some flexibility in hiring, that it wouldn't necessarily come out of one position, but that we reduce the overall by $80,000.
Just to be clear, councillor, so it would be a reduction of $80,000 to the administration salary line, correct? Which includes all administration positions?
Yes. And currently, in the way the budget is presented, they're separated out because one is a contract and others are...
Just the economic development, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call on the amendment?
I have a question online.
Okay.
Nancy, can you hear us okay?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that this would mean that we would not have an Assistant City Manager. Is that correct?
No, well, we would have a different position. We would not have an Assistant City Manager with the responsibilities of the current position. It would be a Special Assistant with modified, you know, a different job, which would fill in the needs that we have to support the City Manager and reflect, you know, the needs that the city has now and as opposed to when we first introduced the position.
So I'd like to ask Brian how he's feeling about that at this point because last, at the last meeting, he was saying that he felt that an Assistant City Manager is the way to go. And I just want to make sure that Brian feels that if indeed you folks wrote to approve the amendment, that he feels that he can work with that.
Mr. Mayor, just a question on process. So the public comment, we don't normally respond to.
Yeah. We can't, I'm sorry, Nancy, we can't answer questions and it's not a public discussion.
Oh, okay. I thought that, oh, so...
So, but I think it's fair to say that the suggestion was one of a few that came from Brian. So we didn't make it up out of thin air.
And I guess I was confused that during this, when we're actually talking about some specific thing, that there couldn't be, you know, a question couldn't be answered. Okay. I've been known to misunderstand things before.
Mr. Mayor.
So anyway.
And just for the public's consideration, so the council, when, you know, discussing this position, I did provide a number of different options that ranged from keeping the Assistant City Manager all the way to, you know, splitting it to different positions or lower-level position or the other options to completely eliminate. So there were a number of different options presented and discussed. At the end of the day, the council decides the funding for these positions, which is going to happen tonight. So, but recommendations and just sort of, sort of menu of options were provided. You know, I will say, I think I did say at our last meeting that, you know, my preference was obviously to maintain, you know, current funding. But, you know, we have discussed a number of options and, you know, I just want to assure the public and everyone that no matter what option is decided upon, we will, we will make it work. I think that was some of your concern. And we will go forward and we will continue doing all the good work that we are doing. This is not going to, you know, impact all the great things that are happening here. So again, a number of options were given. We're about to make a decision, but we're going to go forward regardless of what it is. So I just want everyone to know that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah.
Anyone else? No, some councillor? Good. Patty, can I please get a roll call? On the amendment.
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor DeBrito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yeah, sure.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else? Councillor Gagnon?
Budget, I mean, the budget.
Yeah. Right now. So right now, we've reduced $80,000 from the overall from the city side. So we were 42 above, so now we're 38 below.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we reduce or we increase the amount of revenue that's anticipated in the budget, which would include FAR EMS, the codes, and excise taxes with specific amounts that total $92,000. And I'll like to speak to my motion.
I'll second the motion.
I want to speak to it.
You'll speak to it, okay.
So there has been a second?
Yes.
Can I continue?
Yes.
After the last meeting and realizing how difficult it is to get any cuts, I started looking at a different aspect of the budget, which is the revenue. It's anticipated. And as I went through the numbers, and many departments have various revenue streams, I realized that they seem to be pretty, many of them seem to be pretty conservative in estimates. So I did a spreadsheet that estimated what revenue should be based on the last seven months, which we have actuals for the last seven months. And I came up with actually over $6 million worth of new revenues. And I then spoke with Brian and Christine and I tried to figure out, you know, why they were maybe low, found out that some were really, were seasonal, others were, well, I suppose seasonal also in that most of the money comes at the beginning of the year versus the end of the year, and then the loss of certain revenue streams or whatever, which they anticipate. So anyway, we ended up with those three that I, that I mentioned. And both Brian, well, Brian agreed that we could pump these up a little bit, that they probably were too conservative. So the motion I made for those three items, as I said, totals $92,000. And that coupled with the $80,000, which we just passed for savings, which is a cut, you know, amounts to $172,000. What we're able to do with these two motions is basically cut the tax increase that's anticipated in half for people in the city. So please do that. If for some reason we don't meet those revenue numbers, you know, then, you know, we'll have other issues to deal with. But right now, it looks like we're going to. And as I said, I had the support of the mayor, I mean, the manager and a number of councillors at the time. So that's my motion.
And did you include, councillor, what lines we were talking about for revenue?
So... I can go through it.
Just for clarification.
In your budget sheets, you're looking at, just page two, everything's in revenues on page two. And if you look on line 17, FAR EMS, we're moving from 1710 to 1726. Okay, that brings in 16,000. Codes, we're moving from 288 to 300, that's 12. And then the excise number, excise taxes, was at 2067 and we're moving to 2131. That one was really underestimated. And that brings us the biggest amount, $64,000.
Mr. Mayor, whenever's appropriate, just a comment from... Please, okay. So councillor Gagnon and I did speak about this. There were a number of revenues he kind of, you know, proposed and we looked at that we, you know, could not move. I will say, these three areas, you know, revenue projections are always a little bit difficult. We tend to err on the side of caution just because, you know, if they don't come in, then there's obviously a gap. When you look at these three, excise, codes, and EMS, I think it would be adding another $64,000 to excise. I think that's most likely of the three that we would hit that. You know, fairly comfortable with that. Codes is probably the, you know, somewhat least likely of the three. It's hard to predict too much with codes because it is so dependent on large building projects. And the EMS, you know, you know, I can just give you an example where we are. So through the end of May now, we're at 1.5 million. We're projected to be at that rate at about 1.64 million for the year. But we do have 350,000 out in accounts receivable also. So when you look at boosting it to 1.726, as proposed here, it's, you know, it's definitely, you know, possible or could be likely. But I just want to also add, you know, it's not a total guarantee. You know, we think that we may hit these revenue projections, but it's also possible reviewing the last five years, you've never added over $2 million per year. And now you're projecting revenues higher, and most of the empty positions that the city had, that you had savings in, are now full. So not only are we spending it from fund balance, I don't think we're going to see as much that we're going to recoup on the expense side. And we're, to me, putting revenues up higher that you may not meet, that may also affect fund balance. So certainly, you know, it's a, it's a tough thing to decide every year where to go with the numbers. We do the best we can. But as the city manager said, we'll have to look at it next year if you increase these and see how close you were to the target or, but there may be less fund balance to use towards the budget next year. So just be aware.
Counselor Gagnon?
I mean, that same argument could be used for any spending account also. I mean, any expense account that goes over, it's in the same situation, correct? I mean.
Absolutely. Everything comes in and out of fund balance. So if you don't meet, you know, and stay within your spending, I mean, your draft on that side, it hits the fund balance also, yes.
Right. So we've made no cuts in any of those what the department has wanted. So anticipate maybe that won't happen. And maybe even they can save a few bucks here and there, which will add to some fund balance. But that would be my hope. But I, I just think that, you know, it was just very conservative estimates. As I said, I started out with over $6 million, and you guys trimmed that back pretty good. So this is what we're left with at this point. So I think would be these numbers.
If I could just review the.
It shows that we are with the seven ones that we have current.
Just review the excise numbers to date also, just to give you an idea of where we are. So currently with excise tax, to date, you know, we still have a couple of weeks in the fiscal year, we're at 2.107. And the proposal here is to go to 2.131. So, you know, when I look at the current year and also last year, you know, it seems pretty likely that we'll, we'll hit that. So the excise, you know, I think we're, we're fairly comfortable with when looking at these three, three lines.
Okay. Counselor Klepak?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So this has the potential to negatively impact the plan that we had made around unassigned fund balance, is that correct?
I'm not sure what the plan around fund balance was.
Yeah, sorry. I just guess.
Well, if I could just speak to that, I think possibly what you're referring to is if, if those projections are not correct, then the additional funds are going to have to come out of the fund balance, which means essentially it's the same as, I think, I think Counselor Gagnon's goal can be achieved by adding the same amount to the amount of the fund balance that we, that we use this year. It's gonna, if, if they're, it's, they're both ways to protect the taxpayer from a small increase, right? So they would achieve, if, if the revenue, if the revenue figures come in, then we're good. If they don't, we're, we're using the fund balance, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just to summarize, so, you know, what, what the amendment does is basically, it would be $92,000 here. With $80,000 that was just cut from an administration, that's a $172,000 reduction to the current budget. So that would take off approximately another 15 cents off the mill rate, and we're at a proposed 30%, or sort of a 30 cent increase now. So the overall increase at that point would be, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 cents, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of, it's less than 1% increase, 0.75 or so. So that's what, I think basically what the goal is, is to have the proposed tax increase. And with the amendment that's already passed, plus this one, that would accomplish that.
I was actually referring, I misspoke. I was referring to the capital improvement account that we had spoken about.
That's funded through investment and interest income, so that wouldn't be impacted here, correct?
Well, in the current year, it would not be impacted. In future years, if it, it all closes and all comes out of fund balance. So any adjustment to that may impact other things. But it would not impact the current year we're in about what was discussed.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Counselor Gagnon?
My question was, I mean, I think that, you know, we have the opportunity here with working with each other to make some type of an impact on this tax increase. I originally said that I didn't want to support any tax increase, but I'm at a compromising mode and getting it down from 30 to 15, cutting it in half, doesn't make me happy, but I think it's, it's what we need to do. I'm pretty proud of the people who have worked with me and been honest with me about working on this. Thank you.
Anyone else in the council want to weigh in? Anyone in the public wish to make a comment?
Can I get those numbers again?
Yeah. Do you want me to read them?
Yes.
So it would, it would be amending revenue. So EMS, you'll be adding another $16,000 there. Codes would be adding another $12,000 there, and excise 64,000.
You may. Thank you.
I can go along with this for this fiscal year to see how this kind of approach works. But I, I have to say that it sort of feels like wishing money into existence that may or may not actually be there. The way that we had built our fund balance up was through, you know, one of the ways was through a cautious and kind of conservative projection that the city manager had, had spoken about. And we, the city's done very well on the revenue side, and we've been able to create a buffer, you know, for the city. Maybe this will work. Certainly if the, the city does not run into any unforeseen bumps and that the last seven months are indicative of the next 12, then, then we'll be okay. But there is, there is a risk in, in taking this, this approach for the, for the sake of maintaining the illusion that taxes cannot ever go up as the cost of everything around us goes up, right? I mean, the fact that we already, in the absence of, of this revenue adjustment, in the absence of the $80,000 cut, the increase in taxes that we're proposing for the year and the budget as it stands without any of those changes is certainly going to be far less than the inflation rate for, for the coming year, right? So we're hoping to provide similar services with, with an amount of money garnered from the taxpayer that has less of a buying power than that money had the, the year before. But, you know, that is not, that is not indefinitely sustainable. I think it is laudable to be, to be mindful of tax increases and people that are having a hard time keeping up with the cost of living. But, you know, one hope is that the economic power of Waterville can, can grow in equal measure to the cost of services as dictated by inflation. You know, I'm not an economist. Maybe I'm not understanding all of this correctly. And as I said at the beginning, I'm willing to try this this year, but I, I want the, the risks of this to be duly noted.
Thank you very much. Any public comments? Seeing none. Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
I'm going to go with Counselor Klepak. I'm kind of leery of this. I like to have that buffer that we've got right now. I'm going to say yes, but I want to be on record that this next year, it's going to be ugly for you if it doesn't come through. I promise it's going to be ugly for you.
We're going to carry on. Any other amendments or discussion with regard to the budget as it stands now?
So what is the new mill rate going to be after this?
Well, we'll, Brian.
Well, the mill rate is only determined later on, once we get closer to commitment. So again, the, the projection, we give an estimate, you know, we're, we're talking probably in the neighborhood of 15 cents over, over last year, maybe a little bit higher than that, but probably, probably in less, less than 1% range over last year.
Excellent. All right. Well, yes.
My one big concern with all of this is everybody gets, I'm looking for the right word, they get used to it. They got used to not having a tax increase for four, four or five years, and then the state hit us last year. I want us to make sure that we are telling our constituents transparent that we did not want to do what we had to do last year. The state forced it on us. This year, we got hit blindsided with what the county wanted. It's not that we want to raise taxes. It's not everybody wants a flat. It, we don't want our taxes to go up. I own two properties in town. I don't want them to go up. But I'm realistic of the fact that everything's gone up, and we're just barely, from the way I see it, covering the raises for the employees and not much more. And if something comes down, unexpected HVAC, we can cover that. But if something catastrophic happens, we're going to be looking, what, what, what happened? Because we're, we're dabbling when we should be giving small incremental increases in our taxes instead of blindsiding everybody. Yet we have a safe buffer, and we're playing with that buffer right now.
All right. With that said, Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Can we move this as amended?
Sure.
So moved.
Second.
What's that?
Yeah.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yeah.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Moving on to ordinance 116, 2024.
Amend the zoning map at 37 Armory Road.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
This is a second reading for, any, any council comment? Public seeing none. Can I get a roll call, Patty, please?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 117, 2024.
Amend the administrate, sorry, administrative ordinance.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
All right. Any comment, concern? Seeing none. Oh, you have one?
No. I was going to make a joke about having to.
To gradual.
Dinner early, yeah. Right? So this is.
Gradual.
This is, this is changing our, the time of our meeting from 7 o'clock to 6 o'clock. And it will mean that we always start at 6, regardless of what we have going on, whether there's an executive session or a public hearing, 6 o'clock is when we're going to be here.
All right. Patty, can I please get a roll call?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to new business resolution 119, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of an outdoor dining permit to Travis LaJoy doing business as 18 below.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
And any, just for clarification, these two, the A and B on this agenda, these people are already doing this, but we asked them just to kind of come up to add the stuff that we've kind of talked about before.
18 below is currently not out on the sidewalk. They're putting just a few tables right in front of their establishment. Seala Tea had tables out. We had changed the ordinance last year. And so this will be the first time they're actually obtaining a permit to have a couple of tables on the sidewalk.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. So any discussion with regard to 18 below? Is Travis here?
He is not here.
Yeah. Seeing none. Can I get a roll call?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yeah.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to resolution 120, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of an outdoor dining permit to Bobby McGee doing business as Seala Tea Cafe.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this item? Seeing none. Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes. Yes, I'm fumbling around with my phone there. Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to resolution 121, 2024.
Authorize the issuance of a fixtureless license to Jenny Allen doing business as a coffee house.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this item? Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution 122, 2024.
Approve ratification of collective bargaining agreement for the Public Safety Dispatchers Union.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Resolution 123, 2024.
Approve a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Waterville Creates and North River Company for a hopeful artwork sign.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Gagnon?
I guess I didn't read it carefully. Why do we have to have an agreement with them? I thought this was privately.
What about Creates and the North River Company to install this? So the city would be taking ownership of the sign. So it just details what you see in the agreement. We would have to carry insurance, and I believe we're paying for electricity also.
In the brochure, it speculates $300 a year electrical bill for that sign.
Well, not that one.
Not that particular one.
This one's a little smaller.
So we'll be on the hook for that?
I guess I did.
Go ahead.
I just don't understand it. I don't understand what hopeful is, and I should have asked more questions. I didn't realize that we were going to be committed to something. And what it is that's done, it's not fundraising for some special cause or anything, right? It's just, it's just a sign.
It's a, it's a piece of art. It's, you know, it is the state, it is state and it'll be probably country moving, you know, as there are others, I think, in the.
Part of the trail.
Yeah. So, but yeah, I mean, a lot of it's in the, in the handout that was tonight.
Yeah.
That talks about.
Yeah, that's all I saw, which is that it's about a sign. So anyway.
So they're working on boosters to raise the money for the actual construction of the sign and the, and the placement of the sign. And then, again, that's where the bulb comes in, the donors for the bulbs to replace those as needed. And then, again, any maintenance or any electricity, the city would be on the hook.
And the building they're putting it on is owned by?
North River Company, Dan Jakes. It's the Lockwood Mill.
That's the exact placement, but like, yeah.
Yeah.
So, do we, I mean, so there is a small expense to the city, but it's also a bold statement about our identity as a community that is, values art and also wants to send a message of hope to its people and be connected to other cities in the state, right? I'm just wondering about the insurance piece. Is this something that would be additional to what we currently have?
We would have to add it onto our policy.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, anything in public? All right. Seeing none. Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Counsel Gilly?
No.
Counsel DeBrito?
No.
Counsel Klepak?
This is in support of the hopeful thing?
Yes.
Correct. Prove the MOU.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is five in favor and two opposed.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I'm putting heavy vote in favor of this, so it's like to bring back, reconsider it. I'd like to move to reconsider our action. I was voting on the failing side, and I'll explain why if we can do that.
What do we want to do?
He's moving to reconsider. Is there a second?
I'll second. It's, well, so in, okay, so I'm going to second in the sense where we're going to bring this back, because I was, like, in my mind, I was thinking, let's table this for a little bit, because we didn't get enough information. So that's the reason why I said no, but I would love to bring this back.
That's where I was going.
I do have a point of clarification. Is Favia, having not voted in the affirmative, permitted to second?
No.
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 Yeah.
Then I'll second.
Okay. All right. So discussion on bringing this back?
So now it's back on the table, but it's not passed.
Right. So, so I, I am not in favor of that because I don't think we, we're not going to have any information a minute later than when we just voted. And if people want more information, I think the appropriate step would be to table.
That's, no.
So.
That's exactly what I was planning to do. It's still that. I'm not totally comfortable with my vote, and these two obviously aren't. So let's bring it back, let's table it, learn more, bring it back in our next meeting.
And also two.
My ideas. If this motion passes, then I would move to table.
Okay. I don't understand what you're counseling.
We should reconsider.
Yeah, yeah.
For right now.
I get it. I mean, it's for, I don't know what we're tabling to push down the can, push this can down the curb anymore, because.
Well, we have to vote on reconsidering, correct? And if you don't want to reconsider, then.
Yeah, I don't.
And I believe that requires two thirds.
Yeah. Counsel Finch, please.
I guess I'm just confused with information people think they don't have. It's pretty decently laid out in the packet unless we're going to invite the people back who just gave the presentation. Do we want to invite Shannon Haines? Like, I don't understand. We have the memorandum of understanding. We got it in our council packet. I just, I guess I don't understand what people don't under.
I mean, for me specifically, it's, you know, I mean, I thought the presentation was wonderfully done. It's just the cost to the city for a light bulb, for light bulbs and for a sign.
300 bucks?
Visibly responsible, so.
300 bucks?
300 bucks?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and I guess I will speak on that. And for me too, it's also that it's the cost to the city. And also too, I would like to know, like, is there going to be additional costs to the, to the insurance? Like, what does that look like? Because this was only presented to us today. We didn't have none of this information prior, coming to this meeting.
We should be discussing the motion to reconsider.
All right. Does anybody have anything else to say about the motion to reconsider?
I will.
You want to say something about the motion to reconsider?
Sure.
Okay. What do you want? What would you like to say, Counsel Klepak?
I don't really think we, I, I, yeah, I agree with Counsel Finch. I don't really think that reconsidering this right now is going to, unless people have had a sudden change of heart and would like to vote differently, it needs to be tabled. $300 plus whatever, on the, maybe a couple hundred bucks insurance rider, $500 for a piece of art that puts us in a community of other, in the, in the, in the presence of, gathering of other communities that are valuing art, particularly when Waterville is trying to brand itself as, as a destination for the arts. It seems like a no-brainer. I don't, I'm not even exactly sure why we need to be voting on something that is maybe like $500 worth of expenditure. It just seems like, yes, do that. But that's, that's my, that's my perspective.
Thank you. Okay. Can we get a roll call on the motion to reconsider?
Counsel G.
Just so we're clear, yes, vote is to reconsider, and no is we just, this moves on, we move to the.
No means it passes, as was voted, yes.
So if we motion reconsider, what, like, what's the ultimate goal here?
It just brings it back. We can't, we're having discussions about the issue itself. We shouldn't, we're really, should be like, move the motion to reconsider. Use your mic, Counsel G.
I'm sorry. So if we can do that, if we can just back it up, reconsider it, that it's back on the floor again, and then I think we could table it for the next meeting.
All right.
And then we can all be comfortable with our votes.
So yes, is to reconsider?
Correct.
Perfect.
Are we ready, Mayor?
I think so.
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak? Counsel Green? Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
No.
Counsel McCormick?
No.
Vote is three in favor and four opposed.
All right. Moving on to resolution 124, 2024.
Approve an access agreement Airport Road.
Moved to that.
Second.
Okay. Brian, do you mind catching us all up? I know there were some late developments here.
Sure. So as you may remember, Mr. St. Peter's property was rezoned at a previous meeting to allow a solar project. Part of his project involves an access road that would be across city property, a lot at the end of the airport road. We, I forwarded to you just at 6:15 this evening, received a draft access agreement from Novel Energy, which is the solar company Mr. St. Peter is working with. The city's being asked to consider that agreement. Our city attorney, Bill Lee, has offered some general kind of parameters, but of course, they have to propose an agreement to us that would be suitable for their, their needs. So we're happy to review that agreement, of course, but that in a nutshell is where we are. I think, you know, Leo was here tonight. If there's an opportunity maybe to present a little bit more on the overall project, because he hasn't had an opportunity in front of the full council yet to really talk about some of that and the easement, so that could be an opportunity. But we do have the agreement. It just came in at 6:15 tonight. We're going to be asked to consider that, but I would obviously want our city attorney or someone at his firm to review that agreement and provide some comments for us.
Okay. Mr. St. Peter, do you want to speak to the projects? We like maps.
Thank you.
Next Amazon purchase.
Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
End of the school year. My wife's a teacher. We have six kids between us. It's been a busy couple of weeks, and I've definitely not done my due diligence for emails, so we did get that into you pretty late. But basically, what the easement agreement talks about is, in order to, for Novel Energy to pay for the money to do a wetland studies, which needs to happen on this property, they are not comfortable in doing that until we get an agreement from the city of an agreement of easement to get to a proposed project that we'd like to build. That's a separate, it's a separate thing down the road of the project. The easement agreement will get us to that project hypothetically, the hypothetical project. We want to build a road that will allow access to build the project and then get the power out to the grid. If you don't have a way to get it out, there's no sense to generate it. So the solar field generates it, and then we get it out to the grid. This property, Brian knows more about the property than I do. I'm not the owner of the property, but it's, you know, it's a distance of property that doesn't seem to be developable at this point and links the existing road to my, to the end of my property, to the, to the proposed solar field. If the wetland studies that Novel's willing to do doesn't pass the muster and, and, and basically, we don't get a pass to build the solar farm or the easement, then we don't need an easement. But again, Novel's not willing to enter into a contract to do the wetland studies until we get an agreement from the city, say, yes, you can build an easement. The easement will be contingent, obviously, upon the wetland studies passing. Doesn't pass, there's no easement, there's no solar farm, we just go back to 50 acres of field and trees and my kid's four-wheelers, basically. So however long this project, this, this draft has to be revised a couple times or whatever, goes back and forth between the cities, the lawyers and, and Novel. They've done a lot of easement agreements. They've been in business for, you know, several years. I don't think it, I looked it over and it looks pretty, pretty straightforward, but that's for our attorney to figure out. And that's really what we're just looking for, just to move the project forward. We've been working, my email started back in October of last year to get this solar farm process started, and this is just the next step in that process. Thanks. Any questions?
I, I don't have anything for you, Leo. You know, like I said, this came in, in late. Bill, I know, is Bill, yeah, he's right there. I know that you got this as well and haven't really had as much time as we have to, to look through it all, but, so as I understand this, that, and, forgive me, but I kind of assimilate this to when folks come to us ahead of time for zoning changes, to get kind of projects off the ground and to, you know, support funding for projects and things like that. So as I understand what this request is for, is for us to kind of, to, to agree to an easement pending or the ability to do this study and to determine whether or not that it's, it's feasible to, to build a, an actual road on this parcel. But in order to do that study, they kind of want some reassurances from the city that if they spend the money, that, you know, we're going to hopefully then approve the easement at the end of the day, right? Is that kind of how I read what this, what this is, what they're asking?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Oh, I wasn't even aware that we received a draft agreement, so I haven't looked at anything yet.
Oh.
But I think in essence, that is what is being proposed. And, and I think maybe you're not ready to vote on something that hasn't been reviewed yet.
Right.
But if the council is willing to say, well, with, with the right conditions, we support this concept, then obviously you would be then directing me to review that agreement, get back to the administration with any proposed changes and comments that we may have.
Okay.
And, and they can go back and, Michael, back and forth once or twice on language and then be ready for a vote by the council.
Counsel Finch?
Yeah. So in light of the fact that we got the 17 minutes before the meeting started, it's a 19-page PDF. It's got lots of documents, lots of diagrams in it, more than just these two maps here. And, you know, Mr. Thompson's email does say that if this is tabled to the next meeting, he could be in attendance. And this is the guy from Novel Energy. And I think I would just feel more comfortable, one, having more time to look over these 19 pages, and two, I think it'd be a good idea for him to be in person or via Zoom. So I am going to motion to table to the July 2nd meeting.
Second.
Because the daily motion is not debatable. He just bade it. So.
Well, I'll move that we table it.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion to table to the July 2nd meeting on the table.
Am I allowed to come? I've had my hand up for quite a while. Can I, can I get a word in here?
I apologize, Tom, I did not see that, but no, we have to vote on this amendment first. I apologize. It's, well, this is a motion, sorry.
Can I ask a, can I, can I ask a question about the table? My hand has been up since long before that motion.
Can you ask a question with regard to the table?
Yeah.
Sure you can.
Yeah, okay. Mr. St. Peter, what impact would this table any have on the process other than delaying it for two weeks? Is there any direct monetary or any other reasons that we shouldn't approach this with all, all due diligence here?
I think we should, I think this. Point of war, just mayor. This is not a.
But Bill.
Please use your mic so I can hear what you're saying.
You gotta, you can keep your mic down.
You cannot debate a motion to table or have further discussion. If we want to discuss it further, then you defeat the motion to table, and then we can discuss it further. But it is, a motion to table is not debatable. It's on the floor right now. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just assuming we go by Robert's rules. That's, yeah, Robert's rules.
Can I get a roll call, please? This is on the motion to table.
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
I, I, I may in fact move to table it again, but I'd like to continue discussion before we get forced, I, I think there's more to say today before we move to a table, so I'm going to vote no.
Councillor Green?
Um, yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
No.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
No, I want Mr. Klepak to have his moment.
Thank you.
Three in favor, four opposed. Back on the floor.
Okay. Tom, I apologize. Please, continue.
Thank you, and I apologize that I wasn't following Robert's rules there, and it's, it is, I also apologize for not being able to be in the room on such an important council meeting, but that's, that's life by leaving. So, Mr. St. Peter, can you help me understand the timeline that, so you said, you talked about, you know, the email chain starting back in October, et cetera. Is, is there, is there any reason whatsoever other than your obvious desire to be expedient in the process for us to not table it and consider this now?
Well, the first, the first point is, if we table the meet, if we table this, then we're not asking, the city's not directing our attorney to, to, to review the document. And since we got the document late, all I'm asking really is for the city to direct the attorney to review the document and suggest changes. We're, we're not voting on easement tonight. We're asking, I'm asking the city to look over the document, make possible changes.
That's exactly what's on the table tonight, to vote for this, right, without having that, so that the purpose of the tabling was to give the attorney the opportunity to look at the document, make the, you know, make any suggestion, changes to that. We can't, so that's, that was the, that was the, the process. So without the, without that process, then we would vote on this yea or nay without having any review, so.
Okay. So if.
We want to do our due diligence to make sure that you get the, you know, what you're looking for, i- if it makes sense.
I, you know what? I'd like to see this move forward.
Yeah.
The biggest problem for me is I did start this in October, so I'll just, I'll just, I'll just be completely honest. I started this a long time ago. You folks ran into some problem with your solar field on the airport, which is then hence delayed my project. My project, the reason I want to get moving forward is I don't want someone else to hop on the grid that I'm trying to hop on, but I will be 8,000% honest. Like, our lawyer should look this document over and make changes or not make changes. I want this to be smooth and good for everybody. So I think the lawyer should look it over, but I will go on record as saying, my first email was back in October. And then we're going to re-evaluate and change the solar ordinance after my email. I got bumped, I got ignored for three months, and then we got a new solar ordinance. So after my initial email, now we have a new solar ordinance. I understand. As, as a municipality, we really screwed up on the Airport Road solar farm. We didn't oversee that correctly, and I don't think we should let it happen again. I live on the web road. It's a disaster. So I'm all for looking this over, but just understand that every time we make a mistake, it's like late, it's like making this, you got this great opportunity, you got a great loaf of bread, and you got a junk knife to cut it with. Stop making bad decisions on a good loaf.
So, so in order for us to do our due diligence, I mean, would it, would it be enough time for, for Bill to review this document, recommend changes presented before the July 2nd? I mean, with that meeting?
Yeah.
Perfect, and let's.
From my point of view, tabling is the good knife.
Right.
It gives us a chance to, everyone, the chance to look it over, and, you know, the recommendation from, you know, the person you're working with at Novel Energy suggested it.
I agree, I agree 100%.
I, I don't think it's gonna, you know, it's, it is two weeks, but I think it's important to do it right.
We had this meeting, we had this, we had this discussion a couple of times when I was delayed three weeks and it's no big deal. It's always no big deal when it's two weeks on my end. So just, just from my perspective, it just always seems like it's no big deal. So, but you're right, Rebecca?
Yeah.
I said it. I said 8,000%.
Yeah.
We should look it over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But let's, 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 let's make a commitment as a unit of people, professionals. Can we move this thing forward in a reasonable amount of time so that the grid doesn't get full and I don't lose out on, on, on a deal where I can make some income to pay my taxes? Like, that, that's all.
Okay. Yes, sir.
This would require two readings, wouldn't it? Or just that?
Nope. One reading.
This is one reading.
It still requires one reading.
Yeah.
This, this part of it is only required one reading.
Yes.
Because it's, after he gets, we do this, the lawyers are going to talk, it's going to come back to us again, we're going to send it to the planning board.
No.
No?
No.
All right. All right. I thought it would head to the planning board again, but that's one less hoop to have to jump through.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm a. Unreasonable. When I'm wrong, I'm wrong. When we need more time, we need more time.
Yeah. I mean, listen, I mean, we, we put this on the thing, on the agenda, we, you know, we were under the impression that we were going to get these documents in plenty of time for, you know, for Bill to have taken a look at it. It came in 10 minutes before the meeting. It is what it, we certainly tried, we tried to get you, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like happens.
I agree, 100%.
So, a- again, I think the smart play here, you know, for everyone, for both sides, is for us to table to the July 2nd meeting, and that gives Bill the opportunity to look the document over and advise us as to what stands out, and we then can, you know, have a presentation by the energy company as well to discuss further. Councillor Finch?
On, on those words, I will motion to table to the July 2nd meeting.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. All right. And can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thanks, guys.
Awesome. Thanks, Leo.
Thanks, Leo.
All right. And moving on to Resolution 125, 2024.
Authorize the submission of a land and water conservation fund grant application for multi-use trail at Quarry Roads.
We're going to move, go with Doc's.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Now, we need to table this indefinitely. There was an email that came in from Jennifer Kiersted wishing to pull this for a number of reasons. Brian, do you want to just review that real quick?
It's a rather lengthy email. Do you want me to read the whole?
This time, Riley, just, I don't think you have to read it into the record. I think we've all, I mean, it's.
I mean, Jennifer lays out a number of points, it's all, and you're, I mean, if you want to read the, I mean, it's, it's not really easy to summarize, I guess.
Yeah, okay, that's, does anybody have a motion?
Well, just, I, I think it's fair to say that it's a matter of priorities, right, that this isn't the right time.
So, can we do a motion to table it?
Motion to table indefinitely.
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, Patty?
Yes, you may. Hold for a moment.
Holding.
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 126, 2024.
Approve appointment to KV COV General Assembly.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Can I get a roll call, Patty?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 127, 2024.
Approve bid award to Clean Cut Painting Company for City Hall Exterior Painting.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment. We're, we're thrilled to be painting City Hall this year. It's long overdue. We need to take care of this very historic building, and I just also wanted to note that I believe, is it Jeff from Clean Cut Painting is actually with us tonight? So thank you for, for the drive here and for being here. I don't know if you wanted to just say anything since you're here, but we appreciate you, appreciate you being here, and happy to award this bid.
Yeah, I really just wanted to come up to just make sure if you guys had any questions for us about the work we were going to be doing, that I could answer them, but definitely looking forward to the opportunity to work with City of Waterville, and we'll do a great job for you guys.
Excellent. What we're doing, we're doing trim windows?
The whole thing, all the white on the outside of the building.
Yeah, okay.
And the camels as well.
And, and the railing's also the black railing.
Nice. Excellent. Looking forward to seeing that. All right. Any, anything else? Hey, Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 128, 2024.
Appoint Brian Batchelder as local sealer of weights and measures.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Any, yes, Councillor Finch?
So, what is a, what, what, what is this? What, yes, I was going to ask you to explain.
You're the one person.
Who makes things you weigh?
I am actually, as you know, weighs and measures. I am an independent contractor for the state. Yes. The state at one time had 25 people checking your gas pumps to make sure when you buy five ga, five gallons of gas, you get five gallons of gas, or checking all the retail scales in the store. If you buy a pound of ham, you get a pound of ham. Well, they're down to three people. So a number of years ago, the legislature said, yeah, we'll have, let some civilians do it and boost it that way. Well, I'm the only civilian doing it.
Right.
And so I was appointed as one of those local sealer of weight measures in 2022. In 2023, I didn't get back here to renew because I was going through throat cancer. And so I'm back here now, and I requested the appointment, so I've actually didn't have worked here in Waterville in, in 2023, and I've done most of it here in 2024. They're due one-year increments, and part of the reason is, is when I first came to Waterville, some of them hadn't been done in three years. So it is of zero cost to the city. I have all my own equipment, everything, I take care of it. I bill the state for the gas pumps, and I bill the retail scale owners privately, so. Any questions on?
No. Weights and measures, so love it.
I just want to note he spells his name correctly, too, so I appreciate that.
Batchelder? Yeah. Good way to spell that. I know. Thank you. All right. Can we get a roll call, please, Patty?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 129, 2024.
Canvassing of votes and determination of the result of the primary election held on June 11, 2024.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Patty, before you, we wrote on this, I want to say, again, thank you to you and your team. You know, did a great job getting people in and out. I know it wasn't as, as hopping as it was, but again, these are, I know that you're using these two elections that we've had already this year, gearing up to what we know is probably going to be a very busy November election, so tweaking the process and things like that, you know, these dry runs are important, but, you know, again, thank you very much for the work that you got, that you and your team do. It's great.
Thank you. I would, I would also add, I want to thank all the folks that come forward to help. It's, it was a long day, wasn't as busy as we had hoped, but again, it is a training opportunity so that when I'm not throwing them to the wolves in November. Yeah, so we, it takes a village, so I appreciate all the support from those folks and also the city staff, administration. It's been fantastic, so thank you.
And Patty deserves flowers for anyone who's not an elected official who wants to send her some.
All right. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
A yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinance 130, 2024.
Amend the administrative ordinance, Article 3, disposition of city-owned property.
Move to adopt.
Second.